Visiting Beautiful Park County stopped by the Vintage Beehive at their new location, 115 East High Street, Rockville, Indiana. We have antiques, vintage items, homemade, handmade, and handcrafted.
To the life of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes, and I've got the same thing. But there's the adoption. It'll be this total overall and that for the overall non-renewal budget. It's like 1.2. That was, that's the total and add that in comes to the 211, I think it was. 221 overall. And then there's your breakdown for department.
Okay, I'm moving to approve the, what did Callis say? 2022 budget.
Budget. Yes. I'll start then.
All in favor?
It's all right.
Okay, Cindy, are you ready?
I am ready. So this is related to the housing study. We did an inter-local agreement just to show the three different entities that are paying for the study. So this document has that and a resolution where the town and NICS looked at them, is good with them, so.
That's true.
Right.
Gmail.
I was gonna say, we've already looked over this forever.
That's the same stuff we did at redevelopment, yeah.
May I ask you which, is it this one that you brought a new one up?
Yeah.
And then are these two?
I have a new one of these because I have the one that has the redevelopment signatures on it.
And this was just your copy and agreement, right?
And then this, Dave, I think just has your signature brandings on it. So that's the actual inter-local agreement. And then when I get partnership signatures, I will give you a mild copy. Yeah, you have ready to sign here. We have the first kickoff meeting on Wednesday for the study, so we're rolling on it quickly.
I think we have 60.
That's all right. That's the income survey.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there were 57 returns on the income surveys. We need 297.
Get out of my head.
And that's how I have all the signatures.
How come my name's not on there?
Is it on the back?
Yes. It was like, can I copy this?
Meant to tell you.
Yes. That one is not, I don't want to get the last signature, but you, yeah, you can.
I'll send you this one and then I'll just pull it front out.
Redevelopments again. Happy to do that.
Is it everybody? That's you?
Probably no sign, sign either resolution number or any idea what resolution we're on.
If I don't have one in the folder, then sorry, Maggie, if I don't do this, yeah, maybe.
11.
11.
All right, and then here's another one to copy, Brandon, you can.
I'll copy that one too.
Sure, we'll always keep it in your file.
Yes.
Well, I'm done. You?
Greg, you ready?
Well, I'm ready. I imagine you know what this is about. It's about the parking issue. And I was gonna speak at Hawk and express my feelings, but I thought it might be a little quicker and more succinct if I wrote them down, so I have a statement to read from Main Street. Almost a year ago, Main Street came to this group with a list of issues. We were hoping that we could begin a dialogue with the town council on a variety of things that the retail merchants in Rockville believed had a direct impact on not only the quality and appearance of our downtown, but also on the financial well-being of the retail district. We have attended subsequent meetings to encourage the town council and hopefully to learn any progress made on these issues. Imagine our surprise when, with no warning, advance notice, or discussion by any of the affected parties, the issue regarding tour parking enforcement on the square was resolved with a motion by Lady Wright seconding the back parking claim and unanimously approved to simply eliminate the restriction. Main Street represents over 130 business owners in Rockville, Park County and the surrounding area. The impression we are left with after last month's quick vote was that this body, elected by many of the very people who requested parking enforcement, have no interest in protecting the livelihoods of the very people who do so much to support this town. That may sound harsh, but what other explanation could there be when not one of us who brought this concern to you in the first place, nor any business owner who is directly impacted by this issue, was consulted or asked to participate in any discussion regarding a resolution to this problem? The sales tax collected by our retail businesses helped pay for our schools, our police arrows, and the salaries of you, the members of our town council. I've also discovered that this parking ordinance was once enforced when we had a police force with a smaller budget and less officers than we have today. If the resolution to any issues or concerns we have as business owners is to have the existing laws or practices rescinded, then the hopes of any cooperation between our organization and this body will be difficult, to say the least. We have asked for the colored lights surrounding the square to be changed back to all white lights. Will this council simply vote to remove them completely? We have asked for additional bathrooms to support the growing tourism and retail customers coming to our town. Will this body decide to remove the few we have since we can't provide more? The town has consistently stated it can't support watering the flowers that Main Street plants all year long. Is the answer to remove the planters? And will these decisions be made quickly and surreptitiously without any discussion or input from the affected parties? I personally have been a board member and president of my homeowners association for many years in the past. An ongoing problem in our development is speeding. Speeding by UPS, FedEx, Amazon, contractors, guests, and yes, even homeowners. Never once did I think, nor was it ever suggested by any of our board members, that the way to solve our problem was to remove the speed limit signs, simply because we had no way of enforcing them. A simple question. If you had a retail business or a restaurant, or a restaurant, let's say north on Route 41, and people were allowed to park cars in your parking lot all day long, forcing your customers or your potential customers to have to use the IGA parking lot and walk across 41 to your establishment, do you think that might affect your business? Another observation, the town has recently spent tens of thousands of dollars purchasing property at York and Jefferson for additional parking for courthouse employees, without any expressed plans as to how to enforce it. In fact, there's quite a bit of pushback by the very people who would be affected by this new plan. Why do it if you can't enforce it? Could the money being spent on this effort be redirected to parking enforcement? Limiting parking to two hours around the perimeter of the square is a common and consistent practice around this state. It is done in Greencastle, in Crawfordville, in Danville, Lebanon, Franklin, and in many other towns where the success of the retail environment is a critical part of the community. In fact, we believe this has turned into a positive cash flow for many of these communities. It is the right thing to do for Rockville. We, the members of Main Street Rockville, are asking the town council to immediately rescind their elimination of the two-hour parking restriction. This can and should be done publicly by posting notice in the newspaper, and a letter should be sent to all the businesses surrounding the courthouse, giving them advance notice that two-hour parking is still the law and will be enforced at will. We would then like to meet with the police department, investigate how other communities handle this issue. The eventual goal is to construct a plan of enforcement that will work both within our town's budget and solve the needs of local businesses as well. Anybody, business owners on camera? Got anything? I have copies of this. You guys can have, these are copies of this for the board, just in case you'd like to read that one.
I could say that I don't think the discussion was thorough at all at any point.
It was not.
Yeah. And that's not how you do things.
Well, everybody wanna talk about this?
Well, I think Randy brought the, it was in Randy's minutes, apparently. Lady brought the motion, but you two, you two wanna start the discussion on it, I mean, it's, you're the ones that brought it to us.
I don't know what the intention or how we're planning to enforce it. I personally, if I don't have a spot in front of where I wanna shop, I go around the corner and I walk. I think a lot of people come to this town and they shop their way around the square. I see people parking one place, they go from store to store to store. I would think it's more encouraging to ask people to come and shop the town than be concerned that they have to move their car. It doesn't take two hours usually to go around the square unless you're doing a lot of shopping. So I think that would be the goal. The intent of, I don't know how the force would be able to do that without parking meters if there are other towns. I think some of them do have parking meters, some don't. That's certainly a conversation.
Let me respond to that. First, the issue isn't, at this point, how we enforce it. The issue is for the business owners, it still should be a law. And then let's figure out how to enforce it. So saying we can't enforce it doesn't mean we just take the sign down.
Then we have a difference of opinion. I don't, I don't think that it's that big of a deal.
To automatically assume that if you can't enforce the law, you should eliminate the law, is ludicrous.
That's not what I said.
Okay.
I don't know why we need a two-hour parking limit around the square.
I would ask the business owners why we do. Why does that be always happening?
I don't think the other town does.
Yes, they do.
When we first, when we first came to town.
And that was?
Thirty years ago. We were approached about moving our store to 41 by, I think it was Al Gallo. And we gave it serious thought because we had offices next door to us that parked in front of our store all day. If it rained, we did not have one parking spot till four o'clock in the afternoon. And I, we came to the town and finally I said, and I said, we had this, we brought Main Street, came with us. And I said, I don't wanna move that store. But I said, this is our livelihood. I said, this isn't third generation. Our whole life savings was in on that store. And finally, they, they turned and they had, they said, you go tell them it's two-hour parking, you get those cars. I'll tell you, about a month later, this couple came in the store, and the lady came up to me and she says, you know, I don't know what you did, Gary, but we come, we live out east. We came into town three times. We would drive by your store, we would go to, back then, I think it was Hooks. We'd go to Hooks, or we'd go to the Clinton Walmart. But there was parking in front of your store. You had every item we wanted those three times. Parking is everything, everything to a retail store.
And as far as the park, as Jack's building, it's not specifically designed for the courthouse employees, they'll be encouraged, but it's, it's going to be public parking.
You can't afford to have a business park in front of their business and everybody else's all day long. You have to have parking in and out all day long.
You, you might park and walk. There's a ton of people, there's no way they're walking.
I'm not sure why this is a, if you go to Walmart, or Lowe's, or any other large departments or first thing in the morning they open, when they open, all of the employees are parked at the far end of the lot. It's a known issue in retail that you have to have parking in front of your store. If this is not something, and, and to say, lady, to say that it is not an issue.
I don't think I said that either. I said, it's not an issue for me.
Okay. But it is an issue for the business owners.
Use your apps on the business owners' app and see how it feels. I have a suggestion. If we can't enforce the two-hour parking, can we issue parking stickers for people who work in town? And if those cars are parked in a two-hour parking spot, they get a ticket or a citation? And they gotta move someplace else?
Well, my suggestion is we talk to some of the other communities and see how they're enforcing it. Because they're obviously still enforcing it. Christie couldn't be her night, but she said she's got tickets in Crawfordville for parking lot and two hours on this square.
Where I used to live in California, they had a real select system for it.
Probably as well as metered parking.
There were two young men.
Crawfordville did have metered parking. Their meters got old, they took, they took them out. And now they have two-hour parking.
They also have, they also have a municipal enforcement agency that's dedicated to that. They have their own department that handles their parking stuff. They've had about six parking tickets with them.
Greencastle's centering tour parking. They can't all be stupid, right?
What, the other thing I'd suggest is that maybe you express it to the business owners that are going to, that might be helpful for you.
We have. It has been done a number of times.
Don't all the businesses have parking behind the business?
Most do.
Most of them do, yes.
I just have a side, but I'd have parked the space closest to the door, hard park it down.
Coming from a town, it'd be a little more effective in terms of.
Anyway, what I was going to say, as a town I used to live in, they didn't bother to use their permanent police employees or anybody else. They had two young men that were specially designated with credentialing and badges. They were both in wheelchairs, unfortunately, that was something that had to them. They went around and marked the tires and gave the tickets. It was very effective. Didn't have to use the extra, the extra time from the police department. That's another solution.
The point is, there are solutions out there. And to indiscriminately decide to take the signs down and not have two-hour parking, we kinda saw that as business owners, as a slap in the face to the business owners, without any discussion or input from us.
Well, anybody?
Well, yeah, you know, that motion came up, I think I told you, Greg, we stopped by the shop the other day, I said, well, we don't have, we aren't, we rescinded the ordinance, why don't we decide? But there is a fact, even though we're not enforcing it, the sign has an effect. I mean, that's, that would be logical for anyone that's not local. That's a start, at least the non-locals know, hey, there's a sign there, I don't wanna hang out here more than two hours. So that's a positive to have it signed. And I have no problems having, having, having the signs and having the ordinance. I don't know how we're going to enforce it. That's up to Public Safety Department. That, that's, that's the other board that you have to talk to. But I have no problem with it. I mean, I, I just thought that, well, we don't have the ordinance, let's give it a sign. I certainly appreciate the impact it would have on the non-local. But then we have, I'm guessing there's a lot of locals that, well, employees in downtown area that do park most of the day. So that's another issue, but a couple of issues. Yeah, I have no problem.
Are you talking about the outside or?
The outside perimeter.
The perimeter, yes. It's the far perimeter outside of the corner. When the signs are out today, for that.
What do you kids think?
Well, my thing, when, when it was brought up is, you know, if nobody's enforcing it, what's the point in having it? So that was my, you know, if you're not, if it's not doing anything and nobody's doing anything with it.
Can you enforce it?
Occasionally we can, we can't all the time. And on my agenda last month was, what do you want us to do about it? Not that I wanted it gone or anything else. My recommendation was that if you're not gonna enforce it, remove the signs and cancel it. But it's not, to my knowledge, it's ever been enforced. Bill?
Up to my knowledge.
You worked here how long?
Twenty-one years.
Yeah, they, they enforced it on the north side.
Now, there was parking on the north side, there wasn't enforcement, they were parking in the fires.
Well, I think.
Then, we also need to look at, how are you going to enforce it all the way around the square when you've got apartment owner on the west side of the square that has his clients or his people that are paying him to park out front?
There is a timeframe that.
Yeah, quarter to seven, or eight to four or something. Well, I think first step is reinstate the ordinance.
If we're gonna enforce it.
Well, hang on, let me go back to a point I was trying to make. Just because we don't know how to enforce it, doesn't mean we should get rid of the law. That, those don't follow. There's lots of things that lots of police forces and countries and states don't have the ability to enforce, whether it's because of manpower, budget, whatever. It doesn't mean you get rid of the law. I mean, I don't know where that comes from. That, well, we can't enforce it, so let people do what they want. It's just, I mean, that's the first kind of thing that you maybe wanna think about. Maybe to get creative and figure out, okay, if the law's the right thing to do, and if two-hour parking is the right thing to do for the businesses around the square, then rather than saying we can't enforce it, enforce it to get rid of the law, let's figure out some way we can enforce it. And we've never talked about that. You know, the only answer, I think, is we gotta hire another person or two more people to patrol them. I don't know if that's the only answer. Has anyone talked to Crawfordville, or Danville, or Brazil, or Greencastle, and seen what it costs them to enforce it? Or how they do that?
Alicia Lynn's the parking enforcement officer for Greencastle, which makes $34,000 a year.
Okay, so $34,000 a year is what we would need to enforce, that's the way Greencastle does it, right?
Plus insurance.
Benefits.
Well, I'm not gonna worry about that right now. I mean, the thing is, the signs have an impact, and it's logical when you think about it. If I go out of town and I see a sign, I pay attention to it. Of course, I'm getting older.
Don't eliminate the law.
But, 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 yeah, I have no problem with that being nothing for this time. I mean, I don't have a problem.
Is that an motion?
That is a motion. That's a motion.
Second. Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there someone we can meet with to talk about how we go about enforcing it?
Well, technically, we just set a budget for the public safety, that's the police. I mean, that board controls how its staff and what they do, and Randy's their head, head guy.
So Randy, can we work with you?
But I think, well, how to get it for?
Well, I can't jeopardize you to do it.
I know that.
Well, I think you really need John Frank's executive officer at that point.
Yeah, that gives you a chance.
And, you know, get on their next agenda and throw out some ideas. Meanwhile, someone needs to collect some data and use it in the county. What are they doing?
We can do that.
Yeah, it's a start.
Hey, our, if they quick they do, lovely for public, public law, you know, you control what you can control. So enforcement can be hard, but we'll work that out with many some, some way, one way or the other. But what you can control is, you can control your employees. So I think what kinda sticks in your craw, when you, when you see about this new public parking, the Jack's and Jackson thing, and you've got half the employees of County Courthouse saying, well, I'm not walking that far, I would say, hold my beer while I make you walk.
But that's not us, that's.
Whatever. We've got employees that own the square. That's another mountain climb. But the logic is certainly there, you would think there'd be some posts sympathetic to local business parking issues. So, yeah, it's, yeah, it's a good point, Kevin. Yeah, the fact that we're going to have one available soon is a first step in the direction. Next thing is to get them to park. I, you see it in all over, towns these days, they, they've created downtown public parking and not.
Oh, a couple walked to my office, the owner of my company walks and walked to her office.
Yeah, and walking's good for your body. It's good for you. So, any more?
Any more to clarify?
Nope. Randy.
No, we need with, Public Safety.
Opposed, that's commission about enforcement. Lily and Kim's on that board, Randy, but John Frank's executive officer, I tried to reach out and hand it to.
She's on Main Street quarantine.
Yeah, same.
She's on that board too.
Okay, first step, okay. Thank you.
Who's next? Randy.
So I have claims they've brought October 4th from the number five to 369749. Anybody have any questions?
Everything looks pretty normal, hip to stuff. Light bill is half of that, about two to three hundred.
Oh, right. That, there was a, yeah.
Light bill, 263,000, about half of the bill.
In the shared custody.
No, I don't, suing paper, police, 19,000, that's done. That's paper, papers with trailers with substations, it looks like.
Power.
Yep.
Yeah, we got some storm this last week.
Yeah, sewers, that paper. That was, which one was that?
Um, it's on page five.
Yes, it did.
That we were talking about, sewer.
Was that, was it north, four going north, or is that the rural?
Sorry, sorry, page four, page four, October, wastewater wall.
Okay, two, okay, well, that would be the, I don't, we have two.
Water and wastewater.
Yeah, but then wastewater, we have the one with revolve, with the state revolve, we have, yeah.
Revolve, yeah.
Then we have the one for the north. Exactly, both.
Um, that's, well, she just labeled that as wastewater.
Well, it was paid.
She said sewer was that, you know?
Anyway, I moved to approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Um, I have the minutes from the September 20th. Do you have any questions?
Well, it looks like, uh, it looks like what we did. I moved to approve.
All in favor?
Our next next. Yes.
I just wanted to mention, we've already had a couple people pay on past fees at the Birch Festival, our hookup vendor fee is $60. Assuming we wanna leave that the same.
No.
No.
Increase it.
I just wanna make sure, like I said, I've already had a few people pay, so I don't know if it's something that, you know, wanna be a discussion about for maybe next year? Or increase the hookup for next year? Well, I'm just asking, I'm just stating I've had some people pay. It's since I've been here, but that's only been two years.
Three years.
I know it was prior and actually probably two or three years of spreadsheets that I found.
How long did it take him to hook someone up?
Takes more than one guy. Takes a truck or two trucks and the tire.
There were a bunch of them.
Yeah, we get the lights up there.
Each shack or just the?
Yeah, you need your bucket truck. I don't know, figure, oh, 20 minutes.
Pre- shack.
Pre- shack. I think if you're gonna raise that, raise that to 75, just for my discussion with the electric department, if you wanna keep it at 60 this year, then maybe move to 75 next year.
Well, that's, that's planned, yeah, and it's kinda late in game, let's, let's move it up to 75 for next year.
And I can, I'll work it up to maybe some time.
Yeah, I'll make that work now.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seventy-five.
Next year. Probably gonna want a resolution on that, not just a motion.
Okay. Prepare.
I'm reading right now. Somebody asked, can I?
Okay.
Okay, I'm getting there, sorry.
Just get it, just gonna. Um, okay, so about sixty for this year, seventy-five, twenty, twenty-two. Um, okay, I've got a salary ordinance amendment because, and this will affect the MVH labor line, um, that we have a new employee, if voted on, to put him into a full-time position at his hourly start rate of twelve dollars. And I also have the water labor position at twelve dollars. Those are both, um, decreased, new higher wages, um, from the, uh, last employee that was hired in the water department.
How in the world, when was the last time we increased to?
Not, that's.
I mean, fifteen dollars an hour, pretty much to get.
And the one we're losing is getting two dollars more than that to start.
I mean, twelve seemed off the dollar on low for a union employee.
You can flip burgers at McDonald's for eighteen an hour in conferenceville, thirteen, fifteen in Brazil.
Is it really? Anybody else with a truck?
We're losing a guy because of that very reason.
I know.
Who's, who's losing?
How long have they been with us? Have you been with us?
They've been over a year.
And I, I.
What does he do?
No more code.
Oh, he's from Monizima. Well, they pay, they don't get them no.
They're gonna pay him fifteen to start, and then another dollar after he gets, uh, his gas safety certification, and another dollar after he gets a CDL, so he'll be at seventeen within a year.
We don't, I mean, we need to reward our people who have stood for it.
Well, I think when you get a creature minimum starting wage, David, where do you have it?
I agree.
But we also, I mean, we need to look, though, we don't want a starter, starting position to be making as much as regular.
Well, who we got? Who we got?
Um, this is, this is what I've updated currently, so these two positions would be the two people, the one that hasn't been implemented as a full-time employee yet, but the other one that was. Um, so I'm catching, you know, up on that. Um, here you go, here's.
Well, we've got, yeah, you went up to that, thirty, nineteen, twenty-one, twenty, twenty-five.
We've got here, and you've got here.
Uh, eighteen, we've got one fifteen, fifty-seven, we got eighteen, got fourteen, ten, who the heck is that? Oh.
So, you're looking at making a couple of changes if you decide to do that.
Wanna say something real quick, though, when we do this, if we're gonna give them incentives to get CDLs and other, any other, any other kinda.
Certification.
Certification, that it will be January first, when the stuff goes into effect, I mean, the following year.
We don't wanna do it throughout the year, we wanna do it.
Right, and the second thing is, every company out there that gives incentives is making their employees hold to that for a year or two, especially on the CDL thing.
They pay back, they, we.
If they get it.
We have their agreement already drafted, and we can do that.
What do they pay back?
Any fees, like.
The cost of the training, the cost of the license.
Are we gonna train guys that decide they wanna CDL?
Well, they have to go to class, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't even think so, but is, are we gonna pay their fees for their class?
Well, we know they would.
I'm just asking, I'm not.
That's why we're not, so if we pay to get, have them get their CDL, they have to commit for a year.
But, but they have to be successful completion to get reimbursed for their class, I don't think.
Well, so basically, what Randy's pointing out here, we, we say, okay, our minimum starting wage is fifteen dollars now, we got first at fourteen, ten, we got a person that. See, yeah, well, we, we, we have two at twelve, but we have two other people that, that, we have one that'd be under, one just over.
You gotta bump them up?
I don't know, how, how long have they been here?
Well, I believe that wastewater labor has been here a little while. Correct, yeah, it's been around.
John?
Yeah.
Yeah, John's been here, uh, a little bit before, a little over two years.
It was two years in August, and there's one here.
Light labor, oh, he's been around.
Those we've walked in.
He's always been here.
So, Scott, Scott was here, uh, uh, he's been here longer than John, Pam, or I don't know, maybe he was hired. What, what is Scott?
Probably gone.
I guess, I mean, that would be my guess.
What is Scott at now?
Fourteen, seven. This is Scott here.
Yeah, he's fifteen, fifty-seven, fifty, fifty-seven, John, fourteen, ten. So, how should we approach this? I mean, we, we should.
I just need this one for what has already been done. And then if you want to make a motion, I'll do a new one for the next meeting, or for the beginning of the year, however you wanna look at it. But this is what I have been made aware that has been established.
Well, yeah, it's pretty bad we lose our beginning starting, our, our lowest level employees, they, they barely get here and they're going to another hiring. Yeah, we, we need to address that, we're just gonna have, uh.
We won't have, there's too many of their money for projects if we've got nobody that can do it.
Yeah.
And then, then that brings up a point. I understand by trying to get the, the, the lower wager, the more realistic starting thing, but really consider what kinda message that sends to your long-term employees, too, if you don't do something for them as well. What are you rewarding, and where are you trying to reward it?
Well, right now, we're just trying to hire people and not have them leave here.
I, I, maybe we talk about, I mean, it's been.
Why not make your bump after they've been here for X amount of time, instead of your bump as the initial hire?
Well, you can do that, but.
Yeah, but they can go down the road here a few times.
Why not have those skills they can? Your guy left after a year, after he'd been on the job for a year and learned how to do something.
Yeah, he didn't play, he's going.
But if we started him at that.
He still would've known how to do nothing.
So, he wouldn't have gone.
And taken his knowledge of nothing?
He didn't have knowledge of nothing, but I get what he's, that I'm saying, if he's leaving for that pay, so if we had started him at that pay, he wouldn't be leaving.
Yeah, he would, he would've been leaving for even better pay than what you started him at.
Yeah.
Well, he's leaving for the, he's leaving.
If you'd started at fifteen, you would've left for eighteen, if you started at eighteen, you would've left for twenty-one, that's what employees do, they, they hedge their bets to where they can make money. So, it's not where you start them, it's where they can achieve that they're interested, and that goes back to what he's saying.
Oh, I totally agree, it may be.
So, I mean, if I, if I hire somebody, I have a factory job to do law, and I start him at ten dollars an hour, they don't know how to do law. But when they learn how to do it, they have a marketable skill that they can go get that money dollar an hour.
Then maybe we look at a longevity pay.
So, you gotta protect your existing skill.
My longevity pay just pays for someone to have been there.
Yeah.
I much prefer the former.
And Jeff's giving you a warning shot, basically, because if, if you do this, and then you don't raise your existing skilled labor, you're gonna lose them, and you're gonna have all these unskilled people.
And it's, it's really the, having bodies in, in the positions is important, don't get it wrong. But if you lose people with the knowledge to actually do the jobs that are required, that really sets you back. And I, I don't wanna see us getting in that, in that situation, so I think it's something we really need to consider carefully.
Yeah, so we need to do that now. Yeah, we're still doing this tonight because we have a new hire, he was dropped back down to the starting wage we have, we need to prove it to make it official, so. So, I move that we pass that now, and get that out of the way.
Yeah, that's, John is, John Kelly is going to take, uh, Anthony's position with water, and then, uh, Tony is in the MVH laborer's position that Pam vacated, correct?
So, is he gonna depart?
All in favor?
Why?
Is, is that what you have, Randy?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, Jeff, and you get something put together, I mean, it sounds like there's a, a better way to do this. Uh, you're the one feels the effects of.
The losses.
The losses the most.
What about?
But I certainly appreciate your concern, if we raise starting minimum higher, you're gonna have a ripple effect?
Well, I, I guess what I'd say, I mean, you guys are the ones that have a vote, and you can tell me to shove wherever you want, but I would pay for the skill and the knowledge, I wouldn't pay for the life-worn body, you can get a life-worn body anywhere.
Yeah.
Pay for the skill and the knowledge to keep them. Your guy left because he didn't get bumped to where he wanted to, when he had the skills to go get a different job.
But, you know, when someone comes in, just like they're saying, okay, you see the, you need your gas certification. When anybody comes in, we need to have those carrots there ready. Say, okay, you get this, you're gonna get a little more.
Right, and that's a good system.
It is, I don't know that we have that many opportunities for incentives, uh, within the different departments.
Well, everybody should have CDL at town, shouldn't they?
Not necessarily, I think the only one that we have a CDL for is Brett. And I think.
Wasn't that, I didn't have CDL? Of course, anybody gets CDL.
Exactly.
I was gonna say, if I have a CDL, I'm gonna make a hundred thousand tracking independent.
Well, I guess.
And the state highway pays, starts them off.
Well, so the other question is, what do you drive that you need a CDL for that the town has?
We don't have.
Don't hang them big. All right.
You know, the bucket trucks. Big bucket.
Little bucket truck, that's it.
The big one.
The, the large truck, yes, so maybe, or maybe the.
The bigger.
Well, what are the carrots, can we, what else do we have to put into the city, once we hire someone to encourage them to, other than specific department certifications, really nothing?
Well, I suggest.
That's what I'm saying, there's, there's not a whole lot really to incentivize.
I'd suggest you listen to your, your, you know, whoever their department person is on raises when it comes time. Instead of having a rigid structure, if he has an employee that's doing a really damn good job and he knows it, make it an incentive that he, you know, listen to your department head. You know, so if he says, you know, Brett's doing excellent, we need to bump him up this amount, bump it up when it's warranted, instead of just having a rigid, if you do this for X amount of time, we're gonna give you a raise. We're gonna give you a raise based on merit because your boss said you did an excellent job.
I agree with that.
That's what I would suggest.
Five percent across the board, just being thrown down.
Rely on your department head, he's your department head because you trust him to do the job.
And that should be backed up by evaluation.
Right.
And that all the other documentation goes along with the.
Basically, you're talking about job performance raises.
Yeah.
Attendance raises, all that.
Right.
Still wanna do it once a year.
Right, yeah, don't do it just because they ask for a raise, I mean, you don't wanna be held hostage.
Right now, I'm doing it twice, I'm doing it once in June, and once usually in November. Uh, the June one is the informal performance review, that's where we just sit down and we kinda talk, and I go over some of the things, and see they're good, and some things need some improvement. And then in November, I do the final, or the annual performance review, and that's a little bit more detailed and, uh, formal written in, so.
Um, can I get a motion approved to make Mr. Kelly a full-time position then?
Absolutely.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, I have two structure point invoices, those are, uh, actually, those are already been approved in the last meeting, those just need person four and five toward a signature.
Yeah, that, that was last meeting, yeah.
They sent them to me and I.
That was the counter offer that they had made to our offer.
And.
And you guys voted to approve it.
That's four one north?
Yeah.
And those were two of them, we're about to.
There's another one that. We haven't heard anything on that other one, have we?
Are we down to one, or are we down to two owners?
Uh, what about the counter offer?
Oh, yeah, um, there was a counter offer on one of them, um, Ron Wheeler came back with a counter offer of seventy, seventy-five hundred dollars is what he asked for.
Uh, the original was four thousand, yes.
Right, and he indicated that there's already a easement through the property that affects his use of the property, that this easement would widen, that easement would cause even more of a, that dumped properties, why he's asking for additional thirty-one.
I thought all of this was for, it's not.
He didn't own that property, that's one of the properties that he didn't own yet, when we had it approved previously a long time ago.
How about the, the beach, we had that, you know, there on you?
I don't know if that, that's not one of these ones anyway, I mean, I'm just, we're just looking at if a structure point sends them to us.
Yeah.
But Wheeler's made a counter offer of seventy-five hundred. It originally was four thousand, you know, so, I mean, it's either accept that or make a counter case counter.
We'll accept it, we gotta get this thing done.
All right, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Yeah, sort of, pretty big town.
I'd like to re, I'd like to recount it, but I'm not loaded, so that's why.
So, we're down to this one owner now?
I don't know about that, but, um.
Well, I had three. Brown, each.
Probably as they find out they're getting more, not.
And I'm telling you, I don't know the.
I, I, I'm just looking at, you know, I got the structure.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I don't have that in front of me.
Well, it's good, I got, they were down to one.
This, this closes out three of them, so, I mean.
Yeah, it, it wasn't, it's, I don't think it's gonna be a problem, it's better given, uh, perhaps, uh,
What an optimist.
Gotta be in this world.
Surrounded by pisses.
So, anyways, I think the middle one, that's good, that's. All right.
So, I can tell structure point to accept the counter offer. Okay.
I was optimistic once, which is.
Okay, and the only other thing that I have is, if you have anything you want to add, they, was just the last meeting was asked to basically obtain that same contract, except with the exception of a one-year to a three-year, if it's not, I don't think they're interested in doing. Is that what you obtained from that meeting, to, um, like, the, the year-to-year contract, so it was last meeting?
Well, they need to like, they like to add more, just a year for their purposes, the plan.
Right. Right, which kind of, that would be a three-year contract, right?
Goes back to Jeff.
Get to make some decision or what we wanna do.
Well, for.
Well, right now.
Let me read the determination section real quick.
Yeah, read the determination section, um, you know, we downed for a million times in logic department, yeah. Try to go to a two full-time lineman, and how far, how far, can you, can you try to?
I don't know, opposed to a three-year contract.
I'm opposed to a five.
No, I'm just saying, anytime anybody tells me they're not willing to sign any kind of contract for whatever.
Consulting, I just wanna put those in bed now.
Well, right now, those eight, that door is already.
No, you can't, you have.
So, what, what, what else, what other options are there to do?
Yeah, well, right now, you've got one halftime line.
Well, did I say two full-time linemen?
It would, and, you know, I think we can get, Brett's gonna get there, uh, I think he's got another year or so, once a year, a year and a half, until he gets certified. And then, uh, you know, again, do, do we go ahead and start looking for a, a full-time one, do you bring up an apprentice behind Brett?
We tend to keep that as a part of the.
And, and that's the other thing that goes with this, what, what's the, the, what are we wanting to, to set that line of salary at? Because we've advertised for it, we're gonna want to know how much we're gonna pay, what are the benefits, and such and such. And I've talked to, talked to a few people, uh, and honestly, eighty is not out of reach.
Why not?
I think it's doable to find somebody, because there are a lot of people.
We would still maintain our contract.
Would still.
I don't think we do, we don't get rid of.
But it's, you can cut that down.
Stay on that one, what we need him for.
With, with two linemen, you're gonna be able to take care of probably ninety percent of what goes on in your town. And that, that's just, that's a good thing, having two linemen, it's safe, having two linemen, or that one guy on, one guy on.
That should be our, that should be our, our long-term goal, Jeff.
That, that's kinda what I feel, but I just need that to, I just need you guys to.
I'll be there.
So, that's what.
What do you think, David?
Oh, we went down this road two years ago, we had the opportunity, we didn't do it.
Well.
You know, I mean.
We went with linemen and a half, we got linemen and a half.
We could've had two and a half linemen, and so.
Yeah, I remember, I remember it starting to come back to me now, we, we need to go there.
And it was like a year, correct?
I don't.
Well, we had one guy that usually that hard, didn't he?
So, that renews for successive three-year terms unless you give them ninety days' written notice that you're not renewing it.
So, we got ninety-day exemption.
Last one had a year exemption, so ninety days.
We turned it down, so that's, that's still.
Yeah.
We've been trying to raise.
So, it's an initial three-year term, but you have to give ninety days' notice, so really, by the end of September, two thousand twenty, was it five or four? You have to either renew it or give written notice your term.
I don't wanna fly.
Okay.
Well, we started, we oughta have somebody here that's ready to go to that time, if we wanted to go that direction.
Well, we can try.
Well, yeah, yeah, but there's no point in waiting three years, then he's going through this.
No, no, we need to start.
We can't do it.
We can't do it.
Takes takes four years to line.
Drank on your stairs, without the, with the, without the backup of info?
You theoretically, uh, theoretically, yes, but what you would have to do is you wouldn't have immediacy of response. Uh, for example, we have two linemen, they can take care of ninety percent. You have something happen that requires an extra two linemen in a bucket truck, okay? With input, you're gonna have those people here pretty quick to help out. If you don't have that, what you do is you contract out with uh like NIPSCO or uh. Uh, some of the other contractors. You're still gonna have another party.
But it's not gonna be as much, because they're not gonna need to do as much.
We belong to the IMEA organization. IMEA offers mutual aid to its members.
Where do they get their workers? That's just, I mean, they don't have people on staff per se like input does.
Yes, they do.
Well, I mean, they have an au- well, I I I look, yeah.
Are you talking about mutual aid with members of IMEA?
Yeah.
So like Green, say Greencastle.
Well, I I don't know who belongs to IMEA, but but they offer mutual aid for their members, so, and we are a member. So I don't know that we've ever tried that out, but.
Well, I'd be interested to see how that works.
That is an option with just our two guys and if we got the vines like a major storm. Or we would just have to call it like this as a major contract.
They did those apps, so you got some. So I think what you're getting from.
Well, you got.
So, well.
I just wanna chime in because I work, I ran Bainbridge and worked on the Dogan, and I was the only guy that was, and then I, we had one guy. And uh, we ran it, but what Jeff's saying, yeah, I mean ninety percent we can handle. Big jobs, if we knew we had like a big line that we couldn't get to because it is, it is time-consuming. We would bid it out and get, there's different contractors you can get, but I will say that the mutual aid, we've used it a lot, you know, Crawfordsville comes down. London, those bigger municipalities will send guys out.
Well, how did you, how did you reach out to them? Were you?
There's a number, you you, I mean, if you got a, if you got a storm and you got tons of stuff out, you make the call to IMEA, which you got a book. And then they, they're like, what do you need? You're like, well, I need three bucket trucks. They they make the call. They get it rolling for you.
They just activate that mutual aid and whoever can respond.
And that's how we ran.
And would we reimburse that community or that that organization for this?
Yeah, and that's part of, when you sign up for it, and I don't know if you looked into it, it describes how you're gonna pay these guys back and all this stuff.
Well, do you have to find out about the mutual aid to IMEA?
Dwayne Richardson is the guy, I think is kind of the, I have information on that from Dwayne.
So put that together and come up with a plan on how we can get there in three years. That should be enough time, thirty-six months, come on.
Of course, we'll have to pay him more in three years.
Well, of course, we were going to adopt.
Okay, do we wanna vote on this contract?
Oh, I moved.
Second.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
I pose.
Just, just find a new one.
Okay, where we at?
How long will that contract run until eight years?
Through twenty-five.
Three years.
Not on a legal basis.
Okay.
Do you have some input?
No, I just.
We're twenty-four.
Yeah.
We're just fundamentally opposed to that, based on past history.
Well, we're working towards.
Okay.
Uh, Randy?
Hey, Randy.
How are they? Vehicles are still in transit. Uh, talked to the dealership, they're supposed to give me. About a week's heads up so I can get the other vehicle stripped out before we trade it in, get the equipment out of it, um. We're getting ready to recover Bridge Festival and getting some extra, uh, some of our part timers to, to work those schedules and, um, the reserve.
You guys are the, is there a social security ten nights in Milwaukee?
Yes, PCI is paid, pays for it. No, it's near worth this year.
Oh, dear.
Uh, Police One Academy and the Grant Finder is, um, downboarding process going well. We should be done with it and on. Rolling with it by the first of the week. National Night Out was held last week and rescheduled for that night because of rain. We held it at the Park County Fairgrounds, uh, it was pretty popular and. I think there were more kids on the midway that night than there were any night at the fair or all nights at the fair to put together. Um, we gave out personally, uh, four hundred ice cream cones, so that's a lot of ice cream. Uh, the Police Commission approved two part-time officers. Uh, Dan Jones and Brad Schoy both recently retired from ISP and and bring some combined sixty years of experience with them. I've got the statistics on the table. There's three sets left for you to look through. We've got, just received some recalls, more recalls on the fours. Uh, rear tow lengths that we've had issues with before, but. Then a replacement begins, I don't think Ford's figured out what's going on in the meeting. And I will make a field trip after the Bridge Festival and check out how they move the two hours parking. But we're still closing off Market Street northbound. With maybe one or two booths on it and the south end of the courthouse. Which just has deliveries on it. You know, we complain about the parking up there all the time, but. We don't minimize that. The stuff that they have on Market Street could be moved over on the High Street. And. Had Market Street open with parking on it, um, but I still don't know how we're gonna enforce the, uh. You know, they think that their business is the only one going on between eight and four. But people live in the apartments, may work. Midnight to eight or something and sleep eight to four, so.
But those spots aren't designated to those apartments.
No, they're designated to everybody.
Some of them have two or three lead handles too.
Right, but there's still double parking. I mean, there's, they're not.
Public parking.
The purchase of the building.
That's a problem when you don't require the landlords to provide off-street parking for their tenants. And it's kinda hard at the hotel to provide off-street parking, but.
I think they should.
But that's one business you're, you're requiring a board, another business you're not.
Yes, see, that's.
And using parks, a little bit of business, for example, he's got a parking lot, so he doesn't have to worry about people walking from the IGA.
You what?
When he used your business as an example, you got your own parking lot.
Yeah, it's not public parking. And that's staying in public parking is for the public, uh, and in. You know, some people abuse it, use it, use it more than they should, I suppose. Uh, you know, nothing about public parking, you don't have to pay maintenance, you don't have to pay to to, you know, pile of snow or or paint it or anything. It's a pretty good deal. For a, a business that's using public parking, but regardless, you know, in the, in the, uh, effort to, uh. You know, hands across water, we we, and I I I think it's a good idea to try and control the parking abuse. I mean, the signs alone, it has an effect. I really never thought about it.
So is it just the courthouse employees that's about to make the.
Well, that's, that would help.
They're not even talking about that. They're only talking about the perimeter.
You gotta talk about the outside perimeter. Uh, parking's important for retail workers, you gotta, you gotta have parking.
So those business owners will then park on the inside. But they'll complain about the neighbor parking over in front of their business, so that the parking spots are over in front of their business, you know, it's just.
Well, I can take it to a couple of them, this is a park right at the front door, and that's fine if that's where they want to park, but you can't bitch about parking.
Right.
Well.
West Side Square, we all get along, that's all I can say. And West Side Square.
We're gonna get a tow truck, what we're gonna get, and we're just gonna start towing.
We get along with the corner store and we get along with the bananas and we get, all of us all get along over there. Don't lump us in with the rest of the.
Anyway, once we've all done the other time.
That's, that's the thing though, is.
We're actually, they're the apartment people, so, so I mean.
Where we at?
That's the question. You're still with me.
Oh.
Me and my enforcement ordinance all the way around the square or just in the north side?
Code enforcement, is that us or is that your board? I don't know what board it is.
You pass the ordinance and you're gonna tell me how, how it's supposed to be enforced.
Well, right now, we're unsure, Randy. We don't know how many times it'll do it. We obviously don't have any extra funds.
They're chalking tires in Crawfordsville, at least that's how I got my six tickets.
Yeah.
I treat it like a parking garage, it's only gonna be ten dollars or something, it's a ticket, so. It's not waving by.
You wanna interject, Bill?
No.
No. Uh, yeah, here's more information. I have a talent doing it, uh, yeah, we, we don't have the funds to to.
Hey, just let me know what color chalk is that day and all chalks and paint.
Well, if you're gonna chalk tires, that would automatically fine, so maybe the branch will support that.
Is it in that work?
We're not gonna.
The other concern I have is with people calling. Who are they gonna call? Are they gonna call dispatch? Are they gonna call the office and fifteen?
Office isn't, this isn't.
Fifteen times a day, so they're gonna call dispatch or the police fifteen, twenty times a day and say.
Say that Charlie parked here for two hours and we enforce the law that way. That's not how the law operates.
But that's how they call.
Officer available to swear in court that they chalked this tire and it didn't move for two hours. Otherwise, you can't win the court case.
Well, what's your next public safety board meeting, Randy, you know?
October twenty-eighth.
Well. That's the first time you have an opportunity. They they they, we need their, they may come back to that board and get their info.
Sounds like somebody coming to Main Street.
I think so. Uh, but me before that, you probably oughta try and give them information on what the town is doing.
I would.
Costs. Right after the Bridge Festival. Yeah, I'll give you a week or so.
Just so we're all clear, and then we can move on from this. The two-hour parking will be on the inside and outside, correct? I mean.
The radio ordinance is threatening it's on the outside, I think.
We own the streets, we own the sidewalk. I mean, if we're gonna do it, we should do it inside and out.
Well, I kinda agree with that.
I mean, it's, I mean.
If it's, if the, the speed limit's thirty, it's not.
Yeah, thirty tries the whole damn road. Well, I mean.
I like the analogy.
Well. And every entity should be at that police board. I think the county should be there, the renters should be there, or the landlord should be there. All it, all you're gonna do is start, it's gonna be a mess, 'cause we got parking signs on both sides of the road, about both sides of the square.
We do.
So how are you gonna enforce it on one side, not enforce it on the other?
Outside.
No, they're not. They're on the inside.
Over here says something silly.
We can put meters on jailbreak and two hour parking on the outside.
This one right here by the.
Well.
Maybe your parking solves all these problems. I'll take a good meters, photograph it. Seems like somebody mentioned that, whatever you said.
Okay. Thanks, Randy.
I gotta have a meeting to go to though.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Jeff. Uh, I have a new retainer contract for Deckard Engineering. Deckard and, uh, Deckard Engineering and Surveying was the original company. They are, uh, splitting up so that they're two separate entities now. And this is the updated retainerage for Roger as far as, uh, his engineering portion of it goes. Uh, so he just wanted to make sure that we had a copy of that and signed off on it. Uh, because they are two separate entities now. Nothing's really gonna change other than just the names of the entities.
Okay.
Uh, that's one item. We also talked about the, uh, moving John Kelly to a full-time position. We've done that already. Emperor Report, we had two emergency services while Brett was out for quarantine and. Uh, they were relatively minor instances and Emperor responded.
Question.
Yes.
Uh, you know, RMC, I love all you told me, but RMC has those black things around the poles.
Squirrel things, yes.
Wake up.
Yeah, they're, they're ro- squirrel.
Yeah.
Squirrel guards.
Well, first off, do they, do they, do they, do they work?
You know. If it's out in a clear, open spot, yeah, they work.
Yeah.
However, if you're in an area with a lot of trees and.
Well, they can jump.
Yeah.
Well, I guess my point is.
Well, what they do is they get up in the trees and then they get on lines and then they go bowls and then they go transport.
Putting me in those out.
What you can.
Well, I, it would help. I mean, sometimes those are the culprits of the outages.
We, we do get a lot of squirrels.
Yeah.
There's the municipal tires that are at the substation.
Better give them notice.
Have to take it down.
No, but, but that's a legitimate question. And like I said.
It might help.
If, if it works in areas where it's open, because of the grounds can, or squirrels can out and.
Squirrel guard.
Of course, if we had, thanks for the.
Well, I, I don't know, maybe it's something to look into. Yeah, they picked that up pretty quick there on that one out, we were out Peach Canyon, uh. They got it back on freedom.
But we're kinda lucky with them, though, because several of your guys.
Look in his optimism.
And they're fairly close, so I mean, the response times in, in general are, are pretty good.
Missed them, they're missing.
They tried.
Oh, yeah.
But you gotta realize, if that meter count's spinning, it doesn't make you enough.
True.
So there's. They have the vest.
And then, those are the three things I had on my agenda.
That's all you got.
That's all I got. I can tell you, we, uh, we did get our. We got our substation repairer, that stuff came in, uh, we're working on, we have all the, I think we got most of the lights hooked up in the tent. We have, uh, the booths we gotta hook up also, Rutt's out tomorrow, so it'll be Wednesday. Uh, we'll get all the shacks hooked up. And, uh, move the picnic tables over. That kinda stuff. I, thi- things are going pretty well.
Hey, they got the rails, they dumped for the last meeting, dumped.
Yeah, they took the pick.
It was last.
It was like, it was over the weekend.
Yeah, it was over the weekend.
Do you have any issues with the lights on these sides, where? No, we didn't end up breaking any of them. Uh, we had to take them down, put them back up, so, you know, throwing balls, uh, you know, guys were careful.
Yeah, I think they are. They are back up.
Today, 'cause they were down.
I don't know if they got them put backwards yet.
Wasn't she needed it for the lift or whatever? Unless they picked them up today, but.
Maybe I dreamt it.
You guys any worst story?
Uh, I'll just say I ordered the alarms, um, so whenever they get here. Um, I did get another company finally to come out on the transfer switch. And they looked at that last Thursday, so we're gonna have a quote for that. And then they just finished, I just got a text that they just finished up, um, calling the last bit of our sledge up. We're gonna be here, so. We get some next, next.
Sounded like good news about the water tower.
Well, what did? They had to clean out, uh, the, I think it was the south tower.
Yeah, well, it's good news.
It looked great.
No holes?
No holes.
No holes.
Uh, they did.
Six.
But they got basically the, if we had light chemical cleaning, it looked like brand new on the inside, so. I, I think we can pull off on that for a while.
Well, we, 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 yeah, Sue has, wh- whatever became of the conversation that we originally had today. We talked about going to this long-term contracts and minimizing costs when we need to do a tower, make a tower project.
Just trying to get a different budget because it's, it's significant, I didn't see.
Yeah, it was sixty-five thousand a year.
But give them a water park around there, that's not yours, that's just a hand you're doing.
Well, but what's the alternative?
I didn't go through it.
Not have that.
I agree, I, I would love to, I would love to, I, I, I really would.
Well, I think we need to figure out how to do that. We, we, we've got to have a plan for future points, I know it's gonna get hit with a.
Did it cause any, did it cause any type of revenue loss in that department?
I don't know, but.
Cause our.
I, I wouldn't think so.
Yeah, sure.
I can't remember the numbers, I don't have the, uh, cost.
Yeah, I think if I remember right, for the full meal deal, it's like, uh, close to fifty thousand per, per year, per tank.
There were two options though.
Yeah, one was with the.
Do we have that a lot, probably?
I could, I could pull that stuff.
Well, I think we need to revisit it.
This who has.
And think about it.
Or proposals. I have a little one that I just thought I gave the key on.
Appreciate it every year.
That was emailed, too.
But I thought it was great news, though, that, that they.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and I talked to Cody about that, and the, the guys do a really good job of making sure that they're backwashing, you know, twice a week. Uh, you know, our, our waters didn't clean, and, uh, I, I think we need to feel good about that and, and the, the water department for, for what they're doing.
Performance.
We're gonna be doing the, uh, more than you're saying, so.
Yeah, we've got a lot of bugs to talk about here in the next few months. Uh, are you done getting in?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna jump in here with, uh, some stuff that, uh, Cameron Mark now, a whole bunch of information on Roy Reisman about, uh, county tax information. And he, uh, one of the point there has our public safety distribution from the county for next year will be eighty thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars. So, that's a number we nailed up. We didn't really have that, so thank Cameron for getting that, and, uh, so that, that's what we have there. Uh, and we also need to talk about, well, 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 what's, well, at what point do we, what's minimum balance we want in the general fund? You know, we, we, we've talked about that. We don't really have a number yet. Uh, right now, it's very healthy. It's going to decrease over the next few years because of the way we're spending, uh, having to spend some, some funds for some public safety. Yeah, revenue next year, seven hundred thousand that they allocated to the general fund, um, you know, for lack of a better phrase, you go, well, okay, that's minimum balance in your revenue. Of course, that changes, so, yeah, you can still, that's your minimum balance. That's, that's the, uh, the lowest we wanna go. We get down close to that, we're gonna have to revisit the public safety, uh, staffing, basically, in, in UTE's, in bar. But, uh, so I'm just throwing this out here right now. I don't know, and hopefully somebody gets a better idea. Uh, but we need to come up with some number.
Yeah, we do. I mean, we gotta have some kind of trigger. I mean, it was twenty-some years ago. The town was like a million, about a million and one or two.
Well, they're, they're.
In the hall.
Yeah, they burned up a lot of cash back through that one board, uh, did back through the two thousand, so, uh, 'cause, 'cause they worked, well.
It's, it worked to.
They, they must not have looked at the progress question for you.
The contracts.
They worked through one four plus, so they were cash.
I'm with you, David.
Right.
No, one four, no, it came in a great, great dramatically. Yeah, it's just unbelievable. Go back with it, it's just. It was unbelievable. Um.
Somebody was signing a lot of stuff.
But, anyway, yeah, so, so I'm just grabbing a number. I'm, okay, revenue is out, we can make that. Uh, that's, uh, current balance is twice that. You know, it's actually more than twice that, it's one point five. But, like I said, it's going to get hit pretty hard in the next few years, 'cause we bring up to expense everything through there. You know, you can figure, well, the last couple of years, we've done around a hundred twenty-five thousand in public safety expenses in two four nine, so they're two hundred fifty in two years. It's gonna come out of public, or a general fund that would've been into public safety. Uh, so I guess we don't have to make a decision. I've been just thinking about, well, what do you think? Does that sound rational? I need some sort of rational thought process to come up with a number and, uh, so, there's that, you know, also.
Negative one million sounds good.
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds real good.
We, yeah, uh, well, it's a, it's a, there, there we go. We got seven hundred, we got one million, so we got two ideas ready. But again, public safety with two four nine next year, that's gonna be, be, well, build up in that public safety fund account. You know, we got eight thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars. That's split between the two users, we fire and, and police, and, uh, we know we're already going, so we're budgeting more than that, I think, already.
That's pretty, that's pretty standard.
Yeah, it's pretty standard. Uh, and there's also discussion about, there has been about, well, maybe we could expense the police phone, the police department utilities. But if you go back to general accepted county principles, you expense expenses where they were incurred, and the department they were incurred. We don't do that with any other utility. We don't have utility costs for wastewater, be the expense in general. I mean, you need to expense expenses where they were generated. So, I don't think it's wise to go, say, okay, we'll dump these in general funds, we can protect the public safety fund, but you need to record expenses, and like Kevin said, with public safety, you know, you, it's hard, it's easy to cut, it's hard to manage, and you have to manage expenses, and it's something we need to figure out. One of the big ones I've seen in the last few years, maybe put that report together, the community policing is about ten thousand a year, and that boils down to just, that could almost be cut. Totally, because it balloons and, and, it's just handouts. It's PR stuff. I'd rather have tires and gas and officers than, than hand out a lot of, of, uh, this, that kinda stuff. Uh, so that's one account that definitely, and, and Mandy said that, Randy, Randy has said that, that those type of expenses drop dramatically, uh, over the summer months, but, um.
I just know, I, and I agree with you. We've talked about this as far as, you know, that was just a suggestion, a possible.
Of expensing some of those.
About the expensive, and, and I agree with, I agree both ways. Um, I just, with an eighty thousand dollar budget, there's a lot of cuts.
Well, yeah, well, we, we, we're gonna cut.
There's no way to fund.
You know, the thing, the, 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 one-third of Randy's expense every year is, is the vehicle. It looks like we're gonna be into a vehicle about every year with six officers. And we've talked about using the casino money. It's never been really allocated or dedicated to anything. But that's only fifteen thousand. This year's the last, but, uh, so fifteen thousand leaves you at forty thousand vehicles, you're, you're still looking at, uh, and again, all these vehicles, they, you know, they say, oh, they're costing twenty-nine, thirty thousand. Well, by the time you get all the equipment, they're about forty thousand. You have a lot of add-ons for a two. So, if you take fifteen or forty minus fifteen, you're still looking at twenty-five short to come up with money to cover it. Uh, uh, there is the seed of money. That seed of money first started, the county tax started because of the jail out there. They, they created a tax to fund the building of the jail, and then they never did away with it. Um.
As you usually have.
Yeah, I, well, who was it? Uh, was it Reagan or Arnold Reagan that quoted, uh, yeah, once you start those things, they, they, they have a perpetual life, they have a. But, uh, you know, that would be another fund, that, 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 that source of revenue, uh, you can maybe use. But seriously, we've got to come up with a plan to cover these expenses, or something to make sense and have it riding, so they know, 'cause they expect us to come up with where, where's the money coming from, how we're gonna pay for these expenses. We just can't keep running hole. Either that, or we don't have the biggest apartment we have. I think at this point, we're sticking with the six man.
Six or five.
Has, has he made any comments of hiring a additional guy for a sermon?
We didn't officially have him permanently fired before you even knew that. He exercised his appeal right and was entitled to hearing before the police commission, you know?
Really? I'll be darned.
He got five days to file a written request for a hearing in front of the police commission. Under the statute, you have to give him written notice of intent to dismiss. He gets five days to request a hearing. If he requests a hearing, we have to hold the hearing within thirty days. So, when I gave him the notice of dismissal, intent to dismiss, I set a hearing date for October twenty-eighth.
Okay.
Is he still a payroll?
No.
Yes, he has to be under the statute until he goes through the Indiana Code's dismissal part. So, right now, as it sits, he currently is. His attorney's supposed to call me either tomorrow or the next day to discuss him being removed from the payroll.
So, a public hearing?
Do what?
Is that a public hearing?
It'd just be a phone call. It's not a formal action by the government. It'd be an action on his part.
So, back to all the number thing. We, uh, get through October, I think first November, and we really start, we start. Coming up with some final numbers for, okay, what, what, what's, where, where we're gonna pay for this from, uh, and that's time we looked at that Sue as thing, too, to revisit that.
Twenty-eight, so.
See if I can rework it into the, yeah, into the budget somewhere.
Well, first, let's just see what the numbers are. Yeah, I think you, yeah, you, yeah, see what you can do. Uh.
That's the magic.
Yeah, darn it, eighty thousand. Even without that, I think that, that, that hits, that's not, we're not far off from what, 'cause po- fires, I think, around twenty-three thousand dollars, non- payroll expenses. I think they're twenty-three. And even very consistent, you take twenty-three for May, you say twenty for May, at least it's sixty, if you more, it'd be fifty-seven, fifty-seven thousand leaves for, for police. Yeah, we tried to have a zero, break even there with that money next year. Uh, Randy's historically been doing about, say, a hundred twenty, take a point at eighty, so he's, you know, he's, historically, we've still got some expenses to try to figure out. That's all I just wanted to throw back out there, if you ever have something to think about tonight when you can't sleep. Have to get off the knives, honey.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, yeah, someone might wanna make a motion on Roger's contract. Nothing's changed in this, right, other than just the name.
I'll second.
Whole thing.
Three-year contract.
Well, what are we at on that, the, the parking lot, the, the special thing, is it came in?
Yeah, the, the Brownfield people sent out an update last week or week before, and they're still waiting on their paperwork to come in, so they can do that. So, I would anticipate, this is the first of October, I'm still saying the middle of the month, before we're able to tuck that away and we can, we can move on.
You think we can get on this here, pretty ready for?
Possible.
Kevin still has some stuff to get out, I think, doesn't he?
Just a little bit.
And they moved.
I went through there, and the, the front is looking a lot better.
Did you get to talk about, after you signed the lease?
You know, back to the parking thing downtown. Now, I appreciate the sensitivity for these folks, and it, uh, retail's a, tough regardless, uh, where you're at, big or small. But, uh, being in a small town, rural America, you, uh.
Town squares historically aren't, just don't have a lot of parking.
No, they don't. We're very fortunate. When you look at downtown, the towns of our size, and they're, they're sad.
You just want to keep that.
Uh, so we're very fortunate. We have what we have here.
Yeah.
So, you know, we can help them out and, and, and not break the budget, you know, do whatever we can for it.
Well, we need some stuff to serve food, right, don't we?
Well, food and beverage, we do.
Yeah.
That's one of the funds that, uh, we, we haven't tapped much yet. We've used it for a few sidewalk. Um, we could use some seed at the board, I suppose. We gotta decide what funds we wanna use for matching money and projects and whatnot, and what we don't want. Um, but none of those are rest, which I guess you're blunt. That's another good point. I mean, it's a source of revenue, but it's not really tied to most of the retail and square. Uh, you know, ideally, some of the revenue, I, I, I don't see the need to have a full-time person doing that. Uh, the signs alone will help. Once people get dinged a couple of times, I mean, like, they have to have an officer, and honestly, I don't, I, 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 I would think in a twelve-hour shift, sometime in that day, of course, that comes, you gotta check it in two hours. That's, that, back to electric.
But on the meters, I mean, like, when I go to use a meter, I use my card and put in, pay my time.
Where do you do that at?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, well, I've never done it.
So, but we're saying there's already two hour, you get two hours of parking, so how are they gonna? I mean, is there a mechanism where they can get their two free hours, or the meters that, you know, you go in and you just?
At any point, two-hour parking is free, and after that, you get fined.
Right.
Uh, you, you have to have that person that can say they marked it and it took two hours under oath in court to do two-hour parking. That's enforcement is that you go to court, they challenge the parking ticket. Officer takes a stand, says, I marked it, two hours expired.
I don't think on.
You can't go with meters.
You can do meters, yes. That's why I proposed meters a lot back. It's because the meters are self-regulated, you know, if it expires and you come by the office, it says it expired, you have to park it.
No, which pay parking periods are the way to go. Well, to make it.
I don't know if there's meters that you can like enter your, enter information, you get your two hours and what it's.
Yeah, yeah, I'm not certain about that. I, I would think they could program their meters to do whatever you want.
Because if it's their turn to park, then, uh, uh, they'll.
That's not gonna be a cheap deal.
Get pretty expensive.
And then make, maybe give them an extra.
Generally, I mean, if you're trying to fund the enforcement of it, the meters are better than doing the chalk, and because you're parked in front of a meter, it's expired, you get a ticket. You don't have to have somebody.
There you go. It'd be expired in two hours, they're still sitting there, they've been marked.
Well, you still have that person marking them, though. So, that, the two-hour window's problematic, 'cause you have to have a live body come by and mark.
It makes like, well, it'd be the point of marking them if you're gonna have meters.
Right. It, the meters, if you're, if you're doing metered parking, period, if you're parked in front of a meter that's expired, you're getting a ticket.
Who's gonna give you the ticket, though?
Officer drives by, 'cause they're headed to the jail, and they see a meter expired, they stop.
Okay, there's nobody making rounds looking for expired.
Just luck of the draw, you may get through, you may not, but we have a lot of officers drive through the square. So, or you can contract it out, yeah. I mean, hire a company to do meters for you that enforces it itself, and they'll go to court and do their sworn testimony.
Yeah, that's more willing we can stay.
Well, it's self, it's self-paid, though, if you wanna do that, offer the company. I'm just saying it self-pays itself, though. The two-hour parking's what doesn't self-pay itself.
Right.
Because you have to have that person available. The meters will pay for themselves, and the company will do it because they're getting the profits from the meters.
Well, it's, 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 it's.
I still contend, it comes down, you're, you're trying to legislate people's sense of fair and it, I, I don't think it's the board's job to, well, I mean, I, I don't, I guess I don't understand, I don't understand the people, period. I don't understand why, if there are members of Main Street and they're not following the two-hour parking, why is Main Street not addressing it at their meetings?
Well, the two-hour parking hasn't been enforced in twenty-two years, so.
Well, they'll get a ticket like everybody else, I guess.
Right, but I mean, there, it hasn't been enforced in twenty-two years, so they haven't benefited over the course of twenty-two years of half the two-hour parking that was enforced. And they're still in business, and they came here and opened the business knowing it wasn't being enforced. I mean.
What a good point.
I'm here on the square. I opened a business. I know they're not enforcing two-hour parking, and the apartments are above me, parking in front of my business. It's just the risk you run, because you opened your business where you opened your business at.
Well, it's a good argument, but we, uh, we need to all get home. Uh, and, yeah, and the signs alone will, will, we'll, we'll, we'll force them to have a little, I think, how do we force it? Board of.
Get a meter that gives them two hours of free parking for every ten minutes after that, it's ten bucks.
But, uh, that first, that first two hours is, is, uh.
But that's in the order, that's, we're giving them two hours.
But you still have to know that that car was the car that was there in the two hours, so you still have to have that live body person. Whereas if it's metered, it's metered, it's metered.
This building is not big enough if we put in meters.
You what?
I said, this building is not big enough if we put in meters.
We've already had that minimal discussion, and it created a.
Yes.
Well, you know, they, you can't have it both ways. You have to compromise, and, and if they want it forced, it has to be a way to do it, and that may be the only way to do it. All right, I'm just glad we have the signs up and they're not coming down, and, and they can come up with some ideas and how the world, and they, you know, our budget is what it is, we don't have a lot.
Oh, absolutely. It's like, we can, uh.
Uh, so the, uh, the best accompaniment downtown businesses tonight, we should all sleep well.
I think they look good.
Oh, yeah. I'm, I'm done.
Nick?
Just a couple of things. Oh, on that, yeah, you can tell me you shut up on that any time you want. I don't care if we have meters or two-hour parking or nothing, or. People will come to your business, they'll find a way to get to your business.
That's my fault.
Or you can move your business. If I wasn't getting business on the screen, Rockville, I'd leave and go somewhere where I'd be good business. It's me.
And anytime I leave Rockville, I usually have some park, pretty good, like, going to town.
I, I like that we have, for what's worth, I like that we have all our buildings full and their businesses here, and people are coming and going, but it's not because we had a two-hour parking. It's that we've.
That's worse than.
It's never been enforced in my lifetime, so, at least since I've been driving, so.
Hi, Miss Young. Lady still works at town when you were a Japanian parking meter.
Right, and you couldn't spit on the sidewalk.
Okay.
Um, so court-wise, we have October nineteenth, our next small claims court date, November second's our next ordinance violations, ordinance violation court dates. And then we have some in November, too, on eleven nine, eleven twenty-three. So, that's kinda update. We have two days a month now that we're doing small claims and ordinance violations, so. And that's really what I've had going on besides reviewing some contracts and resolutions and things like that, so. I think we did receive, that's about four hundred dollar payments on one of our small claims in the last month or two, so hopefully that made it over the year at some point.
Oh, I mean, I'm sure it did.
Okay.
Chuck.
Uh, but that's, that's really what I've had going on, so. People continue to violate our ordinance system, so.
Job security.
Yep.
I didn't have anything else.
Okay. I got one thing, before we adjourn. I got one thing before we adjourn, uh Mandy's been working on the banners for the town. And I believe she reached out to the hospice of Wall Bash Valley, they wanna put up, uh they've done this in Clinton, uh I believe they have, you have to sign a member of, a a family member up, but they wanna put up veterans' signs, I mean. Deceased or living.
Oh, I love those things, I see them in lots of small towns.
They have them in Danville though.
Yes, Brownsburg's got them, Clinton's now has them. They're eighty dollars a banner, but no cost to the town, uh all we'd have to do is put them up, and they can fill all all of our our spots.
How long, how long will we have them up, David?
Well, that's the thing, they said Clinton is running them from like Memorial, like the month of May through July fourth, uh I think, taking them down and putting them back up for Labor, or for Veterans Day, or, you know, that that time, and then we can put back our our town banners.
Didn't you just sell some spots to the other communities on the fuel pools?
We're waiting on some feedback from that too as well, we're not eliminating that choice.
Oh, I love the Veterans Day, I always enjoy looking at those, actually.
We've got, we've got thirty-two repots.
Yeah, yeah.
That we're looking to fill, and having these, and and we would change them out, so.
Very interesting.
I, all I wanted to know was, I mean, if you guys are, we don't need any motion or anything on this yet, but.
I'm excited.
So how do they, like, who picks them or?
Uh well, picks them.
So somebody that has a vet- a family member who's a veteran, they pay the eighty dollars?
I know, I I do they pay?
I I believe that they would, if you had a, say, or if I had a great-grandfather, I could go through hospice, pay the eighty dollar for the banner, send them the picture or whatever, and they do the design, but it's.
That's, Clinton, they did it in Clinton.
Uh-huh.
And the family members were the ones that paid the bill.
Yeah, I mean, it's not any, the town wouldn't incur any cost, but that banner would also belong to that family.
Oh, okay.
If they, um I think Clinton, did Mandy tell you, or one of the towns, they took them down and a lady contacted the clerk's office and said, can I have that banner, and she said, well, we're planning on putting them back up, she was just thinking it was kind of a one-time thing, so I mean, there's that option too, they're welcome to have that, or it can go back up annually or wherever.
The town Clinton has, I believe they said ninety.
Where did they have them, I haven't noticed.
Ninety.
They're on uh, they're on Main Street and Knight Street.
Nine Street.
Okay.
Knight Street has a bunch of them.
Okay.
But I just kinda wanna let you guys know, like I said, I don't think we need uh any kind of motion or anything on it tonight, I mean, it'd be just a matter of us. Once this is kinda like finalized, for us to decide, you know, when they're gonna go up, have some kind of schedule that we can then we can vote on and go forward and keep it on some some type of the schedule that that they want and we can live with, so.
Do we still have plenty of lies too, there's still plenty of lies.
I I put a bunch on, a bunch of new ones, we're gonna have to order some next year. And she is still working on the town banners, um as far as, I don't have all the pertinent information yet, but she's she's uh making headway there too, so.
Yeah, we wanted to welcome the towns, if they wanted to, I think Marshall reached back out with one with their arch on it, would be nice, um all of the schools in Park County, just get their, maybe their logo or their school, um just something to kind of join in as far as the county and the town, um kind of working together and making it, the the banners aren't just strictly for the town of Rockville, so.
I was under the impression that almost every town did reach out to us, I mean, there was there was one that didn't, but that's that's okay.
I mean, Roseville did.
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
Okay.
So. I wanna make a, make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.